Hi, hi everyone.
We're going to get.
Holly, as I mentioned, will will not be here, so she's going to be taking minutes from the recording, so make sure your mic is on if you can, if you can remember if you're speaking. So we'll start out, um, roll call. I'm here, Mr. Craig.
Here.
Miss Nastro, Mr. Wunderman.
Here.
Miss McDonough, Mr. Youthy.
Here.
Vice Chair McCumsky.
Here.
And Ms. Hopkins.
Here.
Stand and salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Okay, uh. This is the time of the year, November, December, January, we don't often have applications to process, but we just continue to meet just for communications purposes and keep things going. So, um, you'll see many months, we won't have any agenda items, but often we have privilege of the floor that people bring information in and reports on training or other things. So the first privilege of the floor, I want to, um, make this announcement that Dwight.
Yes.
See, his term is up December thirty first of this year.
Yes, it is.
But he has resigned, he's re-upped.
Re-upped.
Seven more years.
Final lifer.
Here's a solution, because they're stuck here until twenty thirty-two.
Yeah, well, we'll see about that.
You can frame that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The way it works is one member's term expires every year, except for the alternate, and that's a five-year term. I don't think I've ever had an alternate that's gone full five years. I think every alternate has eventually become a full board member, but so that's the way the membership goes. So thank you Dwight for, uh.
You.
Re-upping. So we'll go to the approval of the minutes. Does anyone have any corrections? Changes?
I just had one small typo under the comprehensive plan. She has a seven by the word by, that was just a little typo.
Okay, just what, what paragraph does she'll know?
Uh, just, there's only the one.
Oh, okay.
First sentence. Mid midway through the first sentence there.
There should not be a.
Seven.
Number seven by the word by.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? I didn't find anything else, so have a motion.
Motion, we accept the minutes.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Host, thank you all. Um. Reports. I attended the, uh, November eleventh town board meeting. And they were pretty much like us, not a whole lot going on, um. They did have a public hearing to entertain comments on the proposed twenty twenty-six Canada ice town budget. Um, there really were no comments, there were a couple of corrections that they had made from the previous workshop, previous meeting, they were incorporated, but there were no questions. And so, um, they will be voting on that at the December meeting to adopt the budget. I do have a copy of it if anybody would like to see it. Or it's available on, on the website, both this year's and or twenty-five and twenty-six is on there, if you want to look at them and make comparisons. The, uh. Oh, uh, I had mentioned in, in the meeting that, um, we were looking at the timber harvest paperwork and Terry Gronwell had some suggestions where we might get some outside help and he gave, uh, Rich a couple of names. One was from Ontario County Soil and Water and one was from D E C State and so they, they, they helped. I was careful to not commit ourselves to having to look at those. So, you know, typically we look at existing towns, state, but we still do our own thing, you know, so we copy and if we like it or don't. So I wanted to make sure that Terry wasn't pushing to get something yet. Uh, he didn't mention anything specifically. Uh, the reports that they had, uh, not a whole lot, uh, highway departments, uh, cleaning up down trees, doing a little ditching work. Might see along the side of the road, some of the trees that are getting mangled, you know, they're cutting back the limbs. This time of the year they do that. And, uh, I'm not sure if it was this month or the last month, uh, Tim, who runs the mower is retiring. And, uh, they're looking for someone, I guess that's a part-time position. Uh, so they're looking for someone for that job. If you're interested or know of anybody, have them contact Jeremy, frame the highway superintendent. Other than that, really, there was nothing, nothing significant at all. Um, they did have they were going to set the public hearing date for the comprehensive plan. But they had brought up that they had just received, and I guess you probably knew this, they had just received the E A F, the environmental assessment form. Nobody had had a chance to look at it. And I kind of raised the point that I thought it was a little premature to trying to squeeze things in. Hope I didn't cross you up on that, but, uh, so they delayed that, um. And, uh, uh, designating the town board as the lead agency or the count for the, uh, E A F. So those things were talked about. Um, they did pass the resolution to upgrade the conference room video equipment. They reappointed Jesse Hallett to the zoning board and reappointed Dwight to planning board. And there is a, there is a Canada ice Town of Canada's holiday party at the town hall, December twenty-third. Um, it's a bring your own thing, bring your dish to pass, everyone's welcome. Um, highway guys usually come and several, several other people, current and past board members come, so, um.
I know Steve Groot likes to go to that. Is anybody going to reach out?
I will. I'm going to send out, I just, I just received the notice from Eileen, so I was going to forward it and I was going to with the details, I was going to send it to Steve.
Okay.
And that's pretty much all I only had.
Did you hear anything more? They were going to do a code update two meetings ago, but what was that on the?
That was on the, uh, RVs.
RVs, but.
Uh, they were going to go back and talk to the attorney because someone brought up some obscure question.
Okay.
I don't call it a question, but.
They need to present it to the county, do you know? They understand.
They understand that, and that was the reason they were going to have, or the attorney look at it, and then they, the town board will submit it for county review.
Okay, because I haven't seen it.
Right. Because they have not reported back any action from the attorney. So. And, you know, we talked about this whole thing about county planning board approval of things, so basically the position is from with the comprehensive plan, it's kind of bringing everything up to date that will go through the, the review process. Now, from that date forward, we'll be very careful to be sure that anything, at least from our, our standpoint, the lawyers, county planning, review and approval, that, that it goes there. Um, we may have missed one or two in the past because of activity on county roads. Uh, that's the only thing that I know of. We had a subdivision down on County Road thirty-six and and we didn't send it there. But other than that, I think we've been pretty good from a planning board standpoint of having county review.
I think we did. We sent something.
Did we send that?
County planning.
On that one?
Um.
Well, yeah, that's right, we did send that one. So I guess we're up to date. Okay, so it was a, it was a short meeting. I think there was a football game on that Monday night, too. That always moves things so along. Okay, county planning board, Birch, anything, uh?
Uh, yeah, we met, well, because of Veterans Day, there was not a C, not a formal CRC meeting, but some of us met together for an informal CRC, which is just reviewing what's going to be done at the normal meeting. We had a presentation before our meeting from Tom Harvey on the whole electrical distribution issue in the county and kind of statewide where there's not enough capacity
Mm-hmm.
to, or development in a lot of areas, and it's a lack of investment. And then the other question is who pays for that investment, so. Um. Nothing really important to us. Uh, the Denny's in Canagwa is going to be torn down, they're going to have a drive-through coffee shop, so we're going to have another coffee shop along that strip. And, uh, Naples made a couple of changes to their new zoning code on energy regulation, and I think a lot of this has to do with the proposed windmill.
Hmm.
Or wind turbine project, so. That was it.
That's, that's the one they reported, they did an overall regular Yeah. and update, and now this is an additional.
This is just a minor tweak.
Minor tweak to it.
Yeah, and they had a company, I think M R B did help them with writing the regulations.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Birch?
Code enforcement, uh, Joe gave us a copy of his monthly report. Having questions, you contact Joe Miller or um, deputy Joe, Rich Chokey would also answer questions. He's the deputy's code for it now, so. So they have lots of permits that they're issuing. Things being built.
Yes.
Uh, zoning. I didn't see any minutes or notes that came to, to us, so I don't know whether they met this month or not. I didn't have time, well, I, I did not look it up on any card.
Nor did they publish their agenda.
No. I know.
As required by New York State open meeting law.
Hmm. You know, this might be a, an, an opportunity with a new supervisor to say, we need to get this in line, you know.
Said she is on the zoning board.
Yeah, right.
But she was a chairman, wasn't she?
No, no, she was a member, voting member.
Ed Bob's the chairman.
Ed Bob is the chairman.
Oh.
Uh, but, you know, it might be a good, a good time to approach her for, you know, making sure we're doing the, uh, open meetings law and all the documentation for, so that we don't get caught in a, in a issue and get sued or have our decisions reversed because we haven't done things properly.
But I think more importantly is the open meetings law is to get people so things aren't being done in darkness.
Yes.
It's kind of like nice having Zoom. People can participate if they want, and hopefully when we get our email list up.
Yeah.
More people will hear about it.
Okay. Comprehensive plan.
Uh, so as you mentioned, the town board sent, set the public hearing for December. Um, and then they will adopt the plan, um, most likely in January unless there's significant comment during the public hearing. Um, the corrected E F A forms have all been received and those are, uh, on the website if anybody's interested in reviewing them.
They are on the website.
Yeah. Um, so everything is moving forward.
The county's already seen it.
The county filled them out.
So we're all set, right?
Yep, and they, oh, you add the plan as a whole, the county's already.
Yeah.
And the public hearing will be in January?
No, the public hearing will be in December and adoption will be in June.
Okay, so they did set.
They did set the public hearing for December, correct. Good.
Thank you. Any questions for, I mean, the cop planning people? All right. Like I said, we have no agenda items, uh, so we'll just go down to the last privilege of the floors. Anything anybody would like to bring up?
I would like to, um, bring the planning board up to speed on the looking into updating the timber harvest regulation for the town of Canada ice.
Good.
Um. So I've reached out to, um, South Bristol, and I was able to get a copy of their timber harvest application. And I noticed in their timber harvest application, they talk about, um, a New York State D E C document, uh, called voluntary best practice management for water quality. And in this document, they list, um, best practices for skid trails, best practices for how to create a landing, um. And it all with the idea of creating a safer, more, um, clean environment for the water quality around the property being harvested. Uh, I also have copies of their local law for timber harvesting, which came out to be six pages versus the town of Canada ice's page and a half.
Hmm.
So there's a lot of stuff in here that could be duplicated into our local town and um, I think that in the next month I will have a better idea of what the, uh, best practices being done by the surrounding towns are that we can look at drafting into the town of Canada ice's code and application.
Excellent. So, um, again, most timber harvests go by with just a, a, a notification to the town, not approval or denial. And so the foresters are using some guidelines. I don't know what guidelines. Do they use that New York State?
I would imagine they do because it is a D E C document.
Okay.
Um.
Because I'm just thinking that if the, if the D E C forester has a set of requirements, and we as a town come up with totally different, I'm not sure we should be a lot different, really. So, but I don't know how you would find out what the D E C foresters, registered foresters use.
Well, I plan to, I plan to reach out to Region Eight and their local forester and find out.
Excellent.
An overall, uh, you know, strategic view of what he sees other towns in Region Eight doing.
Um.
I don't think it's going to be as hard as reinventing the wheel, but we do want to make sure that we're conserving the soil, we're ins- ensuring that the quality of the water around the area stays, uh, at the highest level. Um, and I think that adding some extra requirements for somebody doing a timber harvest is probably not out of the question for the town of Canada ice.
I, I agree. I think the water quality is great because we want to keep the nutrients.
Yeah.
Late.
Right.
Probably concerns regarding steep slope and erudible soils and that kind of thing that.
And creek crossing.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
And I I'm sorry, and I, I think what we ran into was that we, we didn't have a certified forester in that one time, so I wonder if they talk about that, and if you have somebody who's not a certified forester doing the harvesting. That's what brought this all up for us.
That's right, yeah.
So if they, if they mention that, I mean, um, it seems like we allowed that and that's allowed.
Right. Typically, the, the landowner doesn't want to pay the fee for the, the forester. That's why they're doing it themselves. But since they're doing it themselves, we want to make sure that the regulation is specific enough, that it's not an environmental hazard. That's, that's kind of the whole purpose behind this, including the transfer of slopes and all of that, so.
Cause my recollection was the wording was big, that the planning board may choose to do something. And I think we all agreed that we don't want to have gray areas. It should be black and white, what our responsibility is.
Right.
And I guess my question would be the certified foresters, they are not D E C employees, so they get certified. But what oversight is it to make sure that they're actually applying the standards in that document? You know, I, I, in my recollection was that they get certified, they have some training, but then there's really no oversight to make sure that they're actually meeting those standards.
Are we? We're not required if they have a D E C forester, we're, I mean, in our code, we say if there's a D E C forester, that's sufficient.
Yes.
But we could write regulations that regulate what the forester does, too.
Yeah, we could, or add change that, I'm not sure what other towns do.
Right.
I think that's it. The idea is we put our full faith and trust in the fact that they're registered and they will apply. Because the, our code enforcement officer only has to sign off on the, the registration form. With the registration form, they're, they're required to give us a sketch map of the of the property with a, you know, showing where the harvest will be, the number of trees, the topography, but they give all of that. And then like I said, the highway superintendent is the primary guy to look at it, you know, he knows most about it, but the C E O does look at it and I look at it and Eileen looks at it. So I typically leave through it, you know, they got some maps that show the trees and I sign off, assuming that it's.
That's great, but the start of the.
Taken care of.
Yeah, start of the process, but then as it evolves and finishes.
But the C E O does not, does not do any checking on it.
No.
If, if, if it's a forester, if we've done it, you know, as a site plan, then the C E O does verify. He actually ran into an issue last, with the last one we did. So, but if they're registered, if they're, if they're exempt from our site plan review, no one in the town does any follow-up or checking them.
And maybe
Quality of work.
Something to think about is that at the end of the project, the forester provides an affidavit saying that all this work has been done per the plan submitted. So that later on, if there is a problem, you know, that shows up three months later, you know, in a heavy storm or runoff, and you find out, well, they didn't do this, then he's
they've signed off on it.
He's just an idea.
I think one of the other things, too, that came to light when we were reviewing that application, um, was there was no insurance required.
Right.
Uh, and the town was really left on the hook, should roads be damaged or culverts or, you know, any sort of drainage systems? Um, so I think that was kind of a big thing that came to light is, um.
So when the app, when the permit is issued, don't they always have to provide certificate of insurance?
So in the specific case that happened in April, um, the company that was doing the logging, Joe provided us a certificate of insurance for his company.
Right.
But the town of Canada ice was not named as an additional insured person entity on that certificate.
And they also had workers comp?
I don't think that we asked for that.
Cause that, if you're building a building, you have to provide the liability insurance as well as workers comp.
Yeah, he provided it from the.
That certificate might have been for both of those coverages.
Okay.
Um.
Some municipality in New York State, you are required to get both disability and workers comp, and there's very specific forms that they need to be on. Um, because we are not directly hiring the contractor, I don't know if we would need to require those insurance forms or if we just need to be listed as additionally insured on the liability.
I think that's the bare minimum, the additionally insured.
It would be basically the same type of insurance as if you're getting building permit or any kind of permit. I would think that town is required.
Yeah.
I, I, I know the town requires a building permit, insurance, or the builder.
The builder has to provide workers comp and disability if they get a building permit? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, then, yeah, I would assume that that's then falling under that New York State law.
And any kind of permit that the town issues, I would think.
Well, you see, it's not, it's not a permit, we're just, it's a timber harvest registration. They're just registering the fact that they're going to be conducting a bit of a harvest.
It's not currently a permit.
Right, it's not currently a permit.
That could potentially change. And, and my recollection was the reason we looked into South Bristol was because the specific contractor said and cited their regulation.
Yeah, exactly.
So something from the industry is saying, hey, this is a good one to look at.
Right.
So it's not overly onerous to people who are working in this field. He specifically said that this is a good one to look at.
And, and there are a lot of.
That's important to remember.
There are a lot of things on the South Bristol application or registration form that is not on our form or is on our form in a very ambiguous way.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Awesome. Well, thanks for working on that, Rich.
Thank you.
It's a lot of reading.
A lot of pictures in the best practices manual.
Okay, thank you.
And if you have a forester, we'd be back.
Is, is there anything else that anyone wants to bring up? Um. So a reminder, at the December, next month's meeting, we'll fill out vouchers, payment for the last two meetings. And our meeting is December twenty-second, the fourth Monday, it's December twenty-second. I don't think that's the fourth, I think that's the third. So, wanted to remind you of that. And I believe everyone's up to date with all of their training. Uh, if you don't know, um, you could contact Krista Hoover, our bookkeeper, she keeps track of all of the training and, uh, she usually sends us, sends me a note if people are not there yet, but if you're uncertain.
She can make your copy, whatever she thinks it would be, it goes to her.
Yes.
Okay.
I usually do that. You get, if you send me the copy, I keep one, I always keep one in our file and I give one to Krista, so.
The twenty-second is the fourth.
Oh, it is the fourth?
Yep, the December first is on Monday.
Oh, all right, it is the fourth.
Yep.
Okay.
On twenty twenty-five, yep.
So when you get your packet next month, there will be a voucher in there, fill it out, just like you did, and if you anything else has come up that you need or, or, uh, qualify for payment for, make sure it's on that voucher.
Did we ever, did you ever get the mileage rate?
No, I didn't.
Krista will also be able to help you with that. She'll know what it is.
Yeah. I don't, I don't have last year's budget.
Uh, bookkeeper at, uh.
Yeah, Canada ice dot or Canada ice N Y dot gov or at, dot org is still goes through. I don't know if that changed or not.
Uh, it, I believe it did change from twenty-five to the current twenty twenty-six of budget.
Not on here, not on the, uh, out the I R S.
It, it is not the federal rate, it's significantly lower, yeah.
It's not on the budget either, so I don't know. Call. Go ahead. Sure.
Okay. When, um, when we do our income tax, do we include our, okay, I had done that before when I was on the.
And you may get a ten ninety-nine.
Okay, here's the issue. Town will issue you a ten ninety-nine N E C non-employee compensation. Do not enter into your I R S return as an N E S, enter it as a ten ninety-nine M I S save. And then, when, on the entry field in your software, you put the amount in other income. That way, you're not being taxed, you know, social security is not taxable income. And it's, that's what I do taxes for. Volunteer taxes, and the I R, that's what the I R S has told us to handle them. I tried to get our town to issue ten ninety-nine M and miss, and they said, no, we do N E Cs, so, but that's how you do your personal income tax. Enter it as a ten ninety-nine miss, and the income amount is other, and it will show up on your ten forty as other income. It is taxable, but it's not social security tax.
That's.
And you don't, you're not running your own business, you know, so you don't have to do any of that. That's, that's the other thing with an N E C. You have to put your business information in.
Right.
Just as though. And for the newer ones on the board, I'm not sure if Krista has asked you yet for your social security number. She will at some point, but she will need that to issue the ten ninety-nines. So you can stop then and see her or wait until she asks, it's up to you. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn.
It's her second. Boy, it's her second. Caroline, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, thanks everyone.